Gentlemen, welcome to the city of Bettendorf. This is our committee, the whole meeting for Monday, June 5th, 2023. It's 5 o'clock. Thank you all for joining us. We have one operational item to appear at number 11, and this is something very exciting. So for all of the hard work of the department heads and the staff in finance, thank you very much. We have our finance director, Jason Chat, with us to talk to us a little bit about a new ERP system. Jason?
Thank you, your honor. We are excited tonight to talk a little bit about our selection of a provider for the new ERP system that will replace the current financial system, which, you know, has met its end of life, maybe more than once. But just as a review, how did we get to this decision? Way back in the spring of 2021, council approved us to do a citywide IT needs assessment. One of the resulting recommendations out of that assessment was the replacement of the financial system. And in the fall of 2022, a formal search for this ERP, which stands for Enterprise Resource Program. A search for that ERP began. We brought together people from all departments. This was a huge team effort to find out just what our needs are in a new system and create that list of requirements that we would send out to the marketplace. And those requirements did go out, and we got responses from eight vendors and watched some informational demonstrations from each of those eight vendors. From there, we narrowed it down to a list of five where we did a formal request for information. After the responses to the RF5, we narrowed the list down to three vendors, and we did in-depth demonstrations with each of those, two full days with each of the three vendors. So it was quite an exhausting and exhaustive demonstration. After follow-up discussions with two finalists and reference calls, the team has selected the Oracle NetSuite for Government as our preferred ERP replacement system. Why Oracle NetSuite? It is currently the number one cloud ERP software in the world with over 34,000 organizations worldwide, mostly today, private sector. They are new to the government space and will be solely focused on small and mid-sized governments with their NetSuite for Government product. While it's new, NetSuite is a proven ERP with over 20 years of development in the private sector. We really like their enterprise-class security. Oracle owns, manages, and maintains every component of the Oracle Cloud environment. It's trusted. The NetSuite for Government operates in Oracle's government cloud, which is also used by federal agencies like the Department of Defense, CIA, and NSA. So very strong on the security front. Overall, we love the performance, the ease of use, the lower cost of ownership, speed of deployment, and dedicated customer support, as well as simple integrations with third-party softwares. So we really felt like the NetSuite for Government is the best option for Bettendorf. This is just a generic preview of what a user might see when they log into NetSuite. This is worlds of an improvement over what we see today. But you can see it's customizable by role. There will be automated paperless workflows. I'm really excited about that piece, as well as quick access to real-time data that we can drill down into and get down into the actual leading data. It will allow us productivity anywhere, even on our mobile devices, anywhere in the world, because it's cloud-based. So anywhere that we can have an internet connection, managers will be able to make their approvals and handle the workflows that come their way. Out of the box, Oracle NetSuite for Government provides us with all of the accounting, financial reporting, budgeting, grant management, project management, HR payroll, time and attendance needs that we were looking for. On the horizon, we'll want to look at utility billing, either with the Oracle product or maybe a third party. Maybe some enhanced HR and time and attendance. Applicant tracking is another item that we could continue with Oracle as it matures or find a best-of-breed software. And then licenses and permits. Oracle does have a solution in that area as well, but that was not part of our scope in this search. Budget considerations. NetSuite for Government offers the best solution at the most affordable price of the competition that we saw. Full cost of ownership over the first five years is about $850,000. That includes implementation, as well as the annual cloud subscription fees. This low cost of ownership will give us the flexibility to complement with additional Oracle services or those best-of-breed third-party solutions as we have our needs change in the coming years. Next steps. The Oracle is on the council agenda for tomorrow night for approval and execution. We'll probably come back to you and ask for approval of an additional contract with Barry Dunn to continue their consulting work through implementation. So they have led not only our IT needs assessment, our ERP needs assessment, and now helped us through contract negotiations with Oracle. But we feel it would be a wise move to engage them on the implementation side, to be kind of a watchdog over the implementation of the product. And then finally, project kickoff. One of the things I'm most excited about with this Oracle decision is they can get started this month. Many of the other vendors had much longer lead times. If we are able to stick to their schedule, we could have financials completed by January of '24. So that's a very short implementation period on financials with payroll and HR to follow by July of '24. That's a pretty aggressive timeline, but we're going to give it our best shot to get that done. And with that, I will take any questions you have about this decision.
All right. Any questions? Greg?
Thank you, your honor. First, a compliment for all the hard work. And I was really shocked, actually. I mean, it looks like a big number, but the affordability of this compared to other companies was pretty amazing. So good job, good job on that. Do you perceive in the future that this will save FTEs? Is it going to save so much time that as people leave that maybe we wouldn't have to?
It's tough to say right now. Obviously, it's going to increase our productivity and efficiency multitudes. How that actually comes to be will be interesting to look at, interesting to see. But I would certainly expect that you'll be able to, at the least, reallocate FTEs towards maybe more productive type of work or more important type of work. A reduction, maybe too early to say.
Sure. We'll kind of watch that.
Absolutely.
Or reallocate, like you said. Okay. Thank you, your honor.
Other questions? Nick, go ahead.
Thank you, your honor. I don't know, is Monty available? Can you talk a little bit about the encryption end-to-end, some of the security a little bit more detailed?
I probably can't without putting my foot in my mouth. I didn't think to have Monty here to answer those types of questions, but the system is very secure, and that was one of the key components of our decision.
Very good.
Other questions? Okay, we'll take this up as item 11 tomorrow evening. Let's move to consent. The first item for consent is for our community development director, Mark Hunt. This is a site development plan change, major change, relative to the UMI DCA district at 3150 Glen Brook Circle South.
Your honor, with your permission, I would like Taylor to present tonight. I was out of pocket last week, if that's okay.
Yeah, we certainly understand. Thoughts and prayers with you and the family. Go ahead, Taylor. We're glad you're here, sir.
Thank you, your honor. So our first case is a major site development plan change for 3150 Glen Brook Circle South. This is just north of 53rd, on the west side of Devil's Glen Road. This is a DCA district, so has multiple uses going on. The applicant is Nelson Construction Development. Presently, the site plan that was approved that we're looking at is the Quartet Senior Living. This was approved back in 2019, so that was case number 19-100. The request before you is just to remove a portion of that approved site plan. This is the stormwater detention and potentially Outlot F. So I have that shown in a red box there. A future development may be considered utilizing the removed space at a future date. So this approval would only allow the applicant to move forward and then consider a development at a future time. This was before the planning zoning commission on May 17th. They did recommend unanimously to approve the proposed major site development plan change with the following conditions. Approval of the major change to the site development plan for Glen, 3150 Glen Brook Circle South, providing removing Lot 2 and Outlot F of Glen Brook Ridge Third Edition from the approved site plan is conditioned upon city council approval of a site plan for Lot 2. That site plan must be approved by city council by November 18th, 2023. So that's six months after it went to P&amp;Z in May. This amended site plan shall revert to the previously approved site development plan if no new site plan is approved. Also, conditional approval of this amended site plan does not mandate approval of the future development, and the full DCA site development plan review process will be required for that future development. So we're just reiterating that this does need to go through our DCA process. This allows the applicant to propose something and for staff, planning zoning, and finally, city council to review and consider, but does not tie us to anything, and we could revert back to what it is today. I can take any questions.
Questions for Taylor? Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. I guess my first question is stormwater detention. Here they're taking away the stormwater detention. Have they had an engineer make the calculations to show that they don't need that stormwater detention?
So this allows them to propose a development which would have to meet the requirements of all stormwater needs for that site. So there could be engineered plans for underground detention. That's on them right now.
So that calculation will be made then as part of the process.
Mr. Hunt, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, your honor. That's a great question, Mr. Saxer, and that's really what we're going to be looking at if they do bring another development forward for that area. Right now, the procedural issue is that they included a certain amount of green space in the Quartet, which is the name of the building that we're talking about, that roughly three-acre green space. They included that as part of their package when they turned in the site development plan. They have enough wiggle room to take that out and still meet all of our bulk standards and distances and heights and all that stuff. So we're just taking that three acres out and saying, okay, yep, you can take it out of the site plan if you want to. Your existing site plan still works without it, but we're not making any judgment on what they might do on that in the future.
Other questions? All right, let's entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda as item M.
So moved.
All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow as M. Let's move to N, as in Nancy. This is a approval of site development plan for Lot 7, Betplex First.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you.
Case 23-031, Lot 7, the Betplex First Edition. This is a lot located north of Forest Grove Drive, west of Friendship Path, and south of Competition Drive. So this is just on the far western edge of the Betplex development and borders the Farm Ag property right now. The applicant is Paul Befeli, built to suit. The proposal is for two medical office slash healthcare buildings with associated off-street parking. The area in question is Zone C3 and is surrounded by C3 zoning to the east, C7, our entertainment district to the north, and currently undeveloped A1 to the west. Though in our future land use map and plans, this all, the city anticipates this to be some medium-intensity, possibly higher-intensity development. I will note, the Board of Adjustment did approve a variance to allow front yard parking and to encroach four feet into the front yard for this particular development, and that meeting occurred on May 11th.
That encroachment just goes to a drive into a parking lot, right?
Correct, it goes to the east, so towards Friendship Path. Does not encroach into the landscaping whatsoever. So that would have just been grass, the trees, everything will remain. So landscaping is still the same. Before you do the site plan, you see the two buildings. So this is flipped. We have north on your right, south on your left. So here's Forest Grove. You have the two buildings. I've got dumpsters shared by both buildings. The first proposal actually showed two curb cuts onto Friendship Path. After reviewing, staff and the planning commission concurring, thought it best to have one curb cut, which aligns with the Trillium private drive entrance. This allows for better circulation, safety. This will be a much-used entrance off Forest Grove for future development to the west and for potential to TBK. Sidewalks are shown on Friendship Path and Competition Drive. So they'll end on Competition Drive until future development occurs to the west. And I will note, all stormwater for this property is conveyed to an off-site detention pond to the east. And here's a regional plan of the kind of the Betplex area. So that detention pond is right here, just goes across the street to the east. And you can see how the plan has been updated, but right there, that's where the alignment is, and that's where staff was really encouraged. Total of 80 parking stalls are provided, and the applicant reiterated they will need all those parking stalls. They planned for this to be, this dental medical offices to utilize all those. This meets our code, and the proposed development shows a total of 23 trees, and the updated landscape shows those placements. Here's a rendering. It's a bit zoomed out, but this will kind of blend in with the current developments in the area, similar design and character. Staff contends the proposed development meets site development standards and code requirements, and on May 17th, the planning zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of the site development plan. I can take any questions.
Questions for Taylor. Taylor, the sidewalk that would go west, east-west, that will not be done, right? Because you're waiting on the westernmost development? Or are they going to put in the sidewalk and just bulkhead it there?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Currently, there's a road there, so it's shown right there.
Yep. Okay. I misunderstood that that may not be going in at this time and was waiting for further development to the west. But that is true. It's just going to stop at the end of the property line here. Okay. Any other questions? Greg?
Thank you, your honor. Explain to me again, I'm sorry, I'm not catching this. The encroachment, what's that mean?
So simply, there's a setback. Those buildings meet the setback. The parking is four feet in front of that setback line, right here.
They're not seeing your screen, Taylor. They're not. Show Taylor's screen.
We are. I can see it, but that's not. We can see it here, Mark.
So our code does not allow parking in the front yard setback. The Board of Adjustment may approve an exception if that parking does not encroach into the landscaping area, and that both of those requirements are met, so they allow a four-foot encroachment.
Thank you.
Plus, it's a high development next to a huge parking lot coming towards the street by four foot.
And this development, this lot, was slightly encumbered. When it was platted, the alignment of Friendship Path to the south and the north kind of created this lot to be very narrow, narrower than normal. So this is a narrow lot.
It looked narrow, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, can I entertain a motion to approve consent N? All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take this up on consent tomorrow. There was a third item on our consent agenda items, which was previously listed as consent O with regard to Lot 1 at Creek Ridge Estates 3rd. That has been removed from your agenda. Mr. Hunt?
Yeah, I'd be glad to provide a little information on that, your honor. What happened was we had some inconsistencies with the total elevation. Was it going to be two or three stories? We were expecting two stories of staff. We did not receive those elevations showing the two stories. And because we haven't received those, we wanted to defer until we actually get our eyes on them.
Thank you, sir. Let's move to the new consent O, which is a development plan for 3230 Ridge Point.
Thank you, your honor. 3230 Ridge Point, another site development plan. This is located at the intersection of Middle Road and Belmont Road and Ridge Point. The applicant is Downing Construction Incorporated, representing Vibrant Credit Union. This is a site development plan, really a change of use with a slight building addition. The development proposes converting most of the existing credit union space, so interior space, to a coffee shop. A smaller credit union floor area will remain, so we'll have two uses going on here. Current zoning is C1 Neighborhood Commercial, and the future land use in the area is Community Commercial with some medium-intensity located to the east. So the site plan, I'll zoom in, it's a little hard to see. Most of the building will remain. They are going to propose a new addition to the southern portion of the building, roughly 760 square feet. That area farther south will have a drive-through for coffee service. They are also taking out some parking and replacing it with green space sod to the southwest portion of the building. Restriping will occur in the parking lot as well, so you'll have a one-way circulation going counterclockwise. That will provide for sufficient stacking if there's any coffee drive-through stacking at this location. This site will have a kitchen, an open area in the center with tables, and then some the bank businesses with some separate rooms. So quite a big renovation occurring. They are taking out some trees, but in adding, they're using some of the existing trees and then adding some more. So currently, 16 trees are acquired for this development, so they're using eight existing and then adding eight more. So it meets our landscape handbook, and you can see all of them are pretty much on the streetscape facing Belmont and Middle, with some on the adjoining side lot. Here we have a rendering of the site. The major addition, the major change, is in this orange-yellow box here. That will be the building addition with the drive-through for that coffee service. Otherwise, there's just slight character changes to the exterior of the building. Staff contends the proposed development meets all site development standards, and on May 17th, the planning zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of this site plan. I can take any questions.
Questions for Taylor? None, okay. I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on consent tomorrow night as item O, previously marked as item P.
So moved.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Let's take a look at the remaining consent agenda items for tomorrow night. Is there any item there that a particular council member would like to discuss at this time? Ask any questions about? No? All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all remaining consent agenda items for consideration tomorrow night. All those in favor? Any opposed? Anybody here have an item to be added? Obviously, we had a great birthday bash, Way to Go Team. That was a lot of fun. Mark's band was awesome, Panic River. And we had a great turnout for our press conference on the landing, groundbreaking. So that was cool. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, let's move to our presentation on the strategic plan update. Thank you, Mr. Plane.
Thank you, your honor. And kudos to Jeff, Angie, all the community engagement team on Friday, the birthday party. I had a number of people tell me that foam cannon was cool, and I thought it was cool, and I want one of those myself.
Mr. Plane and Mr. Mayor, I do have a video to show, if that would be okay. It's only about 30 seconds long.
Sure.
That our Jay Foster, certified drone pilot, took for us that day.
Certified drone pilot. Nice.
You're like, that's an important thing to say about our drone. Jay, if you want to get this ready.
One, two, three. Happy birthday to you.
Hopefully, it cuts away before I get to the squeaky voice part.
It does not.
There it is!
Go confetti! Happy birthday to you. Thank you all for coming out. What a special day.
There you go. Very nice.
Wow, just making fun of the mayor. That's what we're doing today, huh? All right. Thick skin over here.
Had a beautiful voice in college.
Thick skin over here, I can take it. Should have started a couple notes lower. All right.
Thank you, your honor.
Back to you, Mr. Plane.
As part of the strategic plan update, we try to get in front of you at least once or twice before we go back into goal-setting in October, and we thought that now is an appropriate time. So we'll try to just go through the top and high priority. We won't go through all of the management agenda. You've got the material, you've had the material. It was in your email, and we made hard copies for you, but we thought we'd do the top 10. So the West Bridge pretty much is Jeff. I'm not sure what update Jeff wants to give, but we're working with developers and the DOT to make sure the assemblages are occurring with the old I-74 properties as well as other ones. Jeff, you want to just perhaps jump in a little bit?
Yeah, thank you, Decker. Thanks, Councilman Mayor. Decker's spot on, and this is obviously a process that takes quite some time. And with the demolition of the Green Bridge really imminent now, those conversations are picking up. The site is becoming more and more visual. So once the site is cleared and demolition of the existing staging area occurs, we do anticipate working with the developer to move a project forward. We also intend on working with the selected developer to create a master plan for that area, regentrify Leach Park, and really create a plan that puts structure in place that'll allow us to help with fundraising, grant writing, things like that. A master plan will really help that. But we anticipate a pretty good opportunity coming forward to you, hopefully, in the very near future.
Thank you, sir.
The Magnolia Hawthorne Neighborhood Action Plan. So Mark's team has been working both with Brian's team to try to have code enforcement on recycling and garbage collection, which, as you know, gets a little difficult. Cans get knocked down, people don't pick them up right away in that area. So after every garbage and recycling area, Mark has at least one enforcement action go up and try to make sure that landlords and/or tenants are picking up that area. We think that's had great success. We've done some changes with our route drivers as well to try to make sure that we get those cans picked up. And we think that, at least initially, that work has helped keep it a little cleaner. I can have both Mark and Brian talk about that, as well as, and Mark put in your packet some ideas that we've had about potential ways to regentrify the area with some streetscaping, as well as some potential property enhancements. We are planning to talk to some landlords in the area to try to get a little more buy-in. We've got a couple landlords we've talked to that have purchased some of the properties. They've changed hands. We're also looking at lighting, additional lighting in the area. So I don't know if Mark or Brian want to talk about your efforts to date.
I'd be glad to kick it off, Mr. Plane. I would just direct your attention to the action or policy action memo I included. It's dated April 24th, 2023. I'm sure you've read it. And really, I think the picture tells a thousand words, to use a tired quotation, maybe. But just seeing that, you can see how many addresses you have. If you look at that memo, on the second page of that memo, how many addresses you have stuffed into a very small area. Every yellow dot is an address. So that means there's a couple, two or three cars. There's solid waste containers, there's recycling containers. And so that built environment is very troublesome. We have been working from a code enforcement standpoint to deal with that, but code enforcement won't change the built environment. Code enforcement can only respond to once something bad happens, then we can go write a ticket, get the lawn mowed, charge somebody a fee, whatever. But we can't, it's not preventative. And even if it does change some people's behaviors, the built environment still doesn't function very well. function very well. So as you read through that memo, you kind of see the short-term actions, which are more targeted rental inspections, we'll stay up with those, we're doing monthly checks for solid waste and yard sanitation compliance, we're doing those right after solid waste day, and we see about an 80% compliance rate. When we first did it, we saw about a 50% compliance rate now, about 80% compliance, so that is working. We did just spend a little bit of money and did a cleanup along I-74 because so much debris does blow into that neighborhood from I-74, which is not initially caused by those residents, so we did do, spent a couple hundred bucks and, and have our contractors go along and clean that up along that fence line as a gesture of goodwill, and we did get a lot of positive response from that. I think we'd like to continue doing that once or twice a season. Long term, if we want to address this issue and want to address some of the built environment issues, there are some ways to do that, and they're kind of included in an illustration that RDG, who's working on our comp plan, and this is kind of a preview into the comp plan, could suggest, no, none of these are funded, we're just throwing ideas on paper here, but you could do some things like change the way parking is done, perhaps provide angled parking all along the streets. The streets are actually wide enough where you can provide angled parking, so you change that environment a little bit, you create a few more parking spaces, you turn some of these dead ends into cul-de-sacs, so people have a natural turnaround, and you provide a little more parking in that way as well. Perhaps even a sidewalk at the rear of the property. Again, nothing funded here, we're not, we're not obligating funds, we're just trying to throw ideas out that might address these issues, and I think if you look through that, there's some pretty cool ideas, and then I really like the connectivity of this neighborhood to what we're doing in the floodplain buyout and improving that area, creating a gentrification of, of that, of those properties while still maintaining affordable properties, we make them a little bit nicer, we make them a little more functional, and then we connect them through trails and sidewalks down to our future park space in the floodplain buyout area. I think that's a very logical and positive connection. Be happy to answer any questions or Friday clarification you might like.
Brian, do you have anything else you'd like to report, and then maybe Keith could talk for just a second or two about any police actions? I think we've, we feel comfortable about how that's changing a little bit down there.
Well, I just wanted to kind of kick off with my solid waste team down there. Every time the guys are down there picking up garbage and recycling, for a while there we were having some issues with, where a lot of residents were throwing in garbage into the recycling bin and whatnot, so we would just get out of the truck and then tag them, and then there was only three residents up along this whole corridor that were repeated violators. We ended up just going ahead and just taking that recycling bin away, because you also got to think that every time that we took a garbage truck to dump down there at the Murph in Davenport, we were getting calls from the Waste Commission stating that we had significant amount of garbage in our recycling stream, and that's obviously something that we want to try to avoid. So there was only three residents that, that were continually violators on it. Everybody else who we have stickered have been pretty forthcoming and following our policies and what have you. And then, like I said, when the guys are out there driving around and they see a significant amount of garbage that might have been laying in the front yards or whatnot, my team works with Mark's team and, and then we get code enforcement officers out there on site, and you know, nine times out of 10, if Mark's team goes out there and, and speaks with the residents, they have picked them up. So I think overall, though, the program is working pretty well.
And Brian, I know you've had, or at least staff members have had conversations with Mid-American about lighting, and they're looking into that, how that could be accomplished as well.
That is correct. One of the things too that is undesirable in that area is the fact that there is really not a lot of lighting down through that whole neighborhood, so we would be, we do have a call into Mid-American Energy to sit and look at developing a plan to add more street lighting through there, and then we would actually install the 28-foot LED Cobra headlights down there, 400 watt equivalent, to cascade the lights more readily down through that whole corridor and brighten it up so that it's more safe and more inviting for the residents down there.
Keith?
Thanks. In regards to the police department, we continue to do the patrols, extra patrol, answer calls. It, it seems to me compared to the beginning, just relative to beginning of last summer, that our calls are down and not as numerous as this, or this year is not as numerous as last year, so I think we're heading in the right direction as far as the number of calls. We still continue at times to get what I consider the nuisance, nuisance kind of disorderly calls, but as far as crime, crime goes, the, the crime statistics there really are not any greater than anywhere else in, in the city, and our, and our officers are dealing with things appropriately and, and answering calls and, and you know, doing what they can when they can down there, and making referrals if, if necessary.
Have we had any referrals to the Juvenile Assessment Program?
They, there have been, most of those have probably been through the schools from, you know, that, the particular, you know, Grantwood area. The, the thing with that is, it's, it's got, it's voluntary, so as, as we know, if, if there's not a willingness to receive the services, we can't force them, so that, but when, when there can be, there are.
If there's any other questions on that area, we feel pretty good about what, what we are doing and what, and we would, what Mark's got in for some potential outcomes in the future, and I think we want to continue that conversation at goal setting when we have a little more opportunity, and perhaps it might bleed into a little bit of the P&amp;Z perspective that we're going to have in July, I think it is, when we have the, the first run with RDG on the redo of the comp plan. That'll be part of that as well.
Jerry, go ahead, do you have something?
Thank you, Your Honor. Are the landlords cooperating? In other words, you know, one of the things you bring up is a lot of cars. Well, are the landlords cooperating to make sure that the cars belong to residents, or are they, we having a lot of visitors?
Well, there's no way for us to restrict visitors.
That's true, yeah.
They're in, we have, we have on-street parking that's allowed down there as well. I would say this, we've had a, a change in landlords, and we, we are up, you know, trying to stay up to speed with that, and we do have some what we think are pretty good landlords. We have a couple of out-of-town landlords that we don't have good track records with that we're trying to help them find their way. So, but the landlords that we do know and we have relationships with, I think we, we would say we, we're doing well with them. It's, there's some that we just, they don't want a relationship with us, and we're not sure we want one with them, so we're working on those as well. But I would say for the most part, the landlords want to, want to improve their properties and make sure that they have the ability to rent them to quality tenants. And we do, for those of you that don't know, we do allow background checks, we authorize background checks for landlords to take advantage of through the police department, and some do that routinely.
If, if I may just carry on some of your questions in, in regards to issues, if we have an issue with a particular property or cause, we are communicating with the landlords. Obviously, if there's drug activity or there's something illegal that our officers are going to, then we are, we're reaching out to the landlords as a police department and making those landlords aware of those issues. Now, how they deal with that, that's on the landlord, but some of the landlords are more receptive and understand when we contact them, but that's really up to them. The, the other thing in regards to vehicles, I feel that there's been a pretty big improvement when it comes to motor vehicles up there, because if they're parked on the, the private drives and they appear to not be operating flat tires and operable, code enforcement has been very good about dealing with those, and if any of those vehicles would be sitting on the public street, then we're dealing with those as a police department as far as abandoned vehicles, things like that. So I, I actually think driving through there, and actually, if you drive there through the day, obviously, you know, there's a lot of, there's not a lot of vehicles there on the streets, I mean, people are gone or working or doing whatever, and, and so I, I think that's a, I think a big improvement that I've seen as far as not only the number of vehicles, but at least the vehicles that are there are, are being used on a routine basis, they aren't just sitting there.
Anything else on this one? Okay. Number three, I think Keith can summarize, it kind of bled into a little bit of your questions on number two, but the Juvenile Crime Action Plan, I think Keith, if you wouldn't mind taking that one.
Which, which one do you want me to?
It's the Juvenile Crime Action Plan. The Assessment Program.
So that program has been up and running for over a year now. We meet on a monthly basis and go over statistics, and there's a lot of good communication between the people that attend these, our community members, the school district, juvenile court, juvenile court services, juvenile detention, family resources, and, and amongst the police department, so there's a lot of good conversation, and there's been various referrals. I don't have, and I, and I will update, I know when I sent some out to the city council earlier, I'm going to gather some data for the, after our next quarterly meeting to just share with the city council, but we believe that is, it's a successful program, and the number of families that are willing and accepting the services in, in various, in various capacities, you know, at the family level, just not to juveniles, but it's kind of an all-encompassing wraparound for services for the whole family to, a lot of times, just as much so to support the, the parent or the adults in those households, because without, if they don't have that support, it's hard for them to deal with some of the current situations. So again, time will tell, I think it's still too early, but I think this is going to be a, a long-term project and success that we're, we're committed to, and that city council committed, you know, our city council committed to also, so I think we're happy with the direction, but a lot of the, a lot of the referrals are coming from the schools, which is, which is a good thing, and the schools are interacting with these families and with CAP, so.
Nothing else, Your Honor? Move to City Facilities Master Plan. We've kind of put this in the lap of Brian and his team primarily, but we are looking at what our opportunities are to, our space here is really limited, and we have interviewed a couple of architects, we're doing an RFQ for architectural services, and we're looking at the other facilities. We already know the library has done a, a space analysis, we're kind of going to incorporate that, but the thrust of this is to potentially look at a public safety facility, probably next to our public works where we own ground, and we think we could easily do that and then renovate this building to accommodate the additional staff. But there's other work that we're going to be doing relative to look at the community center, to look at the library, and, and understand what those needs are to incorporate. So Brian, do you want to talk a little bit about what you guys are at least starting now?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Plain. So last Tuesday, or Tuesday, May 30th, Decker, Jeff, Chief Kimball, Brent Morlock, and I met up here at City Hall. We, Brent put together a really good draft RFQ that we discussed. We basically just need to probably have another meeting to dial in everything that we need to incorporate into this RFQ, and then adjust some timelines, because obviously we want potential architects to come in and view the existing facility and meet with obviously Chief and his team, and obviously different department heads to discuss the space needs that they have, and then, you know, come up with a, an RFQ presentation to eventually present to us that we can move forward with.
And, and we, we had, we had thought when we started the work on this that we might be able to get this work done so that next spring, because it's likely going to cause a referendum, there's no way for us to fund this with existing dollars, we just don't have that in the capital budget unless you were to tell us we couldn't do anything else, which we don't think that's a practical matter. So, and now the legislature's changed when you can do referendums, so it'll have to be at a general, so we could not be ready for this November, it'll likely be November of '24, I think would be the earliest it could be. So we've got a little bit of time to start to put this together, and then as we go into goal setting, we should be ready to show you what we think is being recommended by those folks to, to move forward with, and a funding, a funding plan to incorporate that. So in some ways, what the legislature did to us is a, a little bit of a blessing, although it pushes it out a little longer. But we're not, we're not rattling for space now, but it, clearly in the, in the future we're going to need it, so. Any thoughts, questions? If not, we'll move on. Just move on. Number five, the medic agreement. As you know, we had lots of discussions in the last 18 months, and Scott County was good enough, kind enough, and, and we're grateful for their action. They have decided to take this task on, and they have funded several studies, and they, by resolution, have indicated they're going to make it a Department of the County on January 1st of 2024, and they are now in charge of all the proceedings. There are, there's work going on with medic and Scott County to make the acquisition occur and the transfer agreements, all that sort of thing, so there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes, but this matter from my perspective is pretty well closed, at least for Bettendorf. We've left in the budget, we had put in $150,000 each year over five years to help support, if we needed to, additional ambulance support here. Scott County has told us they don't need it this year, and we're just going to leave it there as a placeholder, so Jason's got the ability to move it this year, and we'll keep those discussions going. I'm not sure that it will ever be needed, but we told them we would keep it in our, in our hip pocket if, in the event that needs to come forward. Again, I'm not sure that's going to be necessary, so we're delighted with this decision, we're delighted with the county stepping up, and I think it's going to be beneficial for all of us, and.
Clearly it will be.
Yep.
Yep.
Greg, go ahead. Just curious, is Davenport in or out now?
Well, clearly they're in, they're not, I don't believe they're going to go their own direction. They've, they, they stepped away from that and supported this, so I think we feel really good about this.
All right, Greg.
Same question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stop signs, speeding enforcement, in actions, I'm going to give it to Keith.
Thank you. So if, I, what I did is I showed you some traffic statistics compared going back to October 2021 to September 2022, and then going forward, and the reason I'm using the, those dates is that's kind of in conjunction with our GT, GTSB grant that we get that assists us. So one of the, the nice things that we're seeing as we're progressing is we're getting newer, younger officers trained up, we're coming up, as you saw, which doesn't really, but it does indirectly affect us, is we're getting, we're going to be getting close to our, up to our manpower, which helps with more officers on the streets that allows for more of this proa, what I would call proactive enforcement. Our traffic, our traffic bureau has been very good on taking complaints or concerns of speed throughout the city, but especially really working the, the school zones during the, the school year, especially, you know, obviously, more so in the mornings when kids are coming to school, you'll see they're very highly visible in the different, they rotate around the different school zones and the, and the enforcement going on with there. So again, we've got another, every year, for some years now, we've been able to secure grants from the Iowa GTSB of $50,000, and that's strictly for overtime, specific to any type of traffic enforcement, to include drunk driving, speed, seatbelt, all those, all those, and we also have the four mobile speed trailers now up and running where we can move, we can be, use those for visible areas to give feedback to drivers, but also those can also at the same time collect data for us to see what, you know, what actually is going on out there as far as the, the speeds and things like that, so that we can also increase maybe speed enforcement in those particular areas. So the statistics are there, I'll just, I'll, I'll go more, jump to the, the most latest from October 2022 to April 2023, where if you just look at the speed, the speed contacts through GTSB, and that would be specific to when our officers are working, separate detail specific to traffic enforcement, and then our speed contacts total for the department so far this year, so we've had 586 speed contacts through April of this year, and that goes back to October, which I think we're, we're going to be ahead of last year's total again, so I think we're going to, we're going to see more proactive traffic stops, I can tell you. I, visibly, I don't know if you're out in your, after I visibly, I don't know if you're out and you're, if you're out, you should be seeing more traffic stops out there. I hear our officers out there getting on the radio, making stops, you know, throughout the day. Our, our, our second shift, a lot of times it's a little bit harder for them to be proactive and I'm talking from the hours between two-ish to, to midnight or 10:00. That's a very busy shift. A lot of times our second shift is, is full of responding to calls. So I'll be honest, probably not as much traffic enforcement is being done at least by the patrol officers. Now I will say again, our day shift patrol officers along with the traffic bureau and especially our night shift, our third shift, we are very proactive and, and more so with drunk driving arrests, which are very important in, in the nighttime. So if you ever look at the Scott County inmate website, you'll see our, our drunk driving. So there's, there's, it's all listed there as far as statistics, but traffic totals for this year, this is all traffic warnings and citations through April of this year over 3,522. So we're up to 73% of last year's total already, still with many months to go through September. Other than that, you know, I think you're aware, other than, I already talked about speed trailers, you know, for the last year or two, we've had all our school zones been updated with all those electronic signs. So they're all consistent. They give feedback to the, to the drivers in those school zones with their speed. And, and then just, I don't, I know, I just mentioned there, obviously, you know, probably Hopewell is our most challenging right now just because of everything going up on the northeast part of town with the rerouting of traffic, things like that. But I also think that with some of the stop signs that have been put in now on, on Devil's Glen, the, the realignment or placement of a crosswalk and the stop signs in front of the school, it's, it's made things safer for everybody, the, the children, the crossing guards, everybody in that area, and we're getting a lot less complaints. Granted, you know, at the beginning and end of school, it's congested in those areas for about 20 minutes, but that's true really of any of our schools throughout our city. So I think the, the complaints are, are down as far as from the citizens that live up there. Sometimes takes a little bit longer to get through there. You have to be patient and I think some of people have finally figured out if they don't, if they're not included in the school stuff, they're just going to reroute themselves and find a different way to go. And I think they've figured it out now. So I don't know if, from that standpoint, Brian, have you got any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to also say, an important one that we just got done doing a couple of months back was at 16th and Brown where we made that a four-stop intersection. That was a, an area where people were speeding down 16th Street and by putting that in a, at a four-way stop, that has significantly reduced congestion, people getting in and out, moving east and west through that corridor. So that, that helped as well. So we'll continue to work with the police department and if we see areas of concern or whatnots, then we will obviously come forth with an ordinance and adjust stop signs, yield signs or whatever we need.
And we work really, like I said, we work really good with, with Public Works, with Brent Morlock, with our traffic, with our traffic officers and Lieutenant Champion and just dealing with all these issues. We're consulting communication and getting feedback if we see problem areas and/or complaints. We're, we're trying to address them as timely as possible with the, with the citizens.
Questions? Greg?
Thank you, your honor. That's great to hear that, chief. You know, when I was, when I was an officer, new officer, I was running radar and I was hiding behind a billboard or something and one of my supervisors jumped on me, he says, why are you hiding? I said, well, if they see me, they, you know, blah, blah, blah. And he said, well, the one car that you would stop for speeding, 100 cars went by, they didn't see you running radar, you know, and then the next time they go by, oh, there was a radar there. So I guess my, my long, long response is, have you thought about doing any kind of a public with, with Angie and, and letting people know that yes, we are concerned about speeding and, and there's, they're still blowing through stop signs and it can't be everywhere, you know, you have five or six officers, but something to the effect of we're, we're concerned about traffic, it's a concern of the city and the police department and we're going to, we're beefing up enforcement, we're doing special projects and just get it out to, to the community that they need to be a little more.
Sure.
Cognizant of it.
Yeah, I, I think anything we can do from a, a either public edu, public education or public awareness standpoint, we surely, we surely can, can continue.
If you could think about maybe something along those lines.
Very good.
Thank you for all your effort on that.
Thanks.
Who else? Jerry.
Thank you, your honor. Does the traffic bureau ever work second shift or do they only work day shift? You mentioned the second shift patrol officers have usually other things to do. So is second shift sort of, that's when people are coming home from work and they tend to be in a rush to get home or to get someplace else?
So our, our traffic bureau generally, I generally is not working those shifts normally because there's a lot of responsibility during the day and they have other responsibilities as far as dealing with accident, accidents. But that's what the GT, so the GTSB grant is something where officers, to your point, where those gaps in time, so we, we can set up the overtime where officers voluntarily sign up to come in and work overtime on those grants to work those times. So I, I guess I was a little misleading, specifically patrol, but with, with that GTSB money, that's, that's what's used to, to pay officers overtime to come in and work, work those other, those other time periods that you're speaking of.
Good. Nick, Nick.
No, Nick, go ahead.
Yeah, just one quick question, maybe an ignorant question, but do we look at these statistics by resident and non-resident of speed, these speed related statistics? Have we broken that down at all?
We, we don't. I, I will, I will tell you that most of the speed complaints, especially the ones I hear about the most in neighborhoods are the people that live in those neighborhoods. So it's not, I mean, it's the people and I, and I will tell people this, when they call and they get a little bit frustrated, I, I offer to them, I was like, you get me a specific car with a license plate and I will go and personally address the issue with them because that's the most efficient, best way of having that conversation with those people in that neighborhood to, to slow down. A lot of times and, and we do look at, you know, a lot of times it is younger, you know, younger drivers, but not always. And so, but to your point on all the, the neighborhoods, it's, it's people that live in those neighborhoods, it's not out of town people.
Thank you. Good, your honor?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Number seven, senior facility and services. This was in response to when we were closing the fitness center and we are monitoring the usage at the community center by seniors. We're also going to be talking to Brad at the Y about their usage by, of seniors of those facilities. I think the way we heard this from you was we were concerned about would we have seniors move from the fitness center to the community center and, and will that number be large enough that it would require us to consider something else? We're monitoring that level of people. My sense is that a lot of them have gone to the Y because those Silver Sneaker programs exist there. They don't exist anymore in our world. So we're seeing some senior usage there, but a lot of other usage. So right now we're just monitoring that. We'll, we'll give you a report later in the year as to what, what that looks like.
Good? Questions? All right, moving on.
Get to my number eight. City attorney's support. We think we've resolved most of that, at least short term, and I don't know if Chris wants to talk about it, but you kind of know the changes and we think it's working pretty well so far. And I'll let Chris maybe expound upon that.
Yeah, I agree. Michelle Spencer, she's had some duties added to where she helps, helps the, the legal department a little bit more and that's been working out right. And then Jody Machie is now full-time with the legal department. I think this helps with efficiency. It helps with certain actions to just open up some of my time a little bit more. So I think it's, it's been a, a real success. I don't think there's really much else to say. I, I appreciate having that additional support, there's no doubt about it.
He's not taking any more time off though, I just want to tell you that. He's, he's still working hard. The BIRM policy review and direction, we haven't done a whole lot on this, but Mark's done a little bit of work and he's got a, a report in there as well. And I'm not sure if Brian wants to add to that, but Mark, do you want to just give a little update?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Plain. If I could just kind of tee it up and if Brian wanted to add anything, I'd be glad to hear. We did have, you know, the comprehensive plan process ongoing and, and the zoning ordinance and that's going to address some of our thing, some of the things related to buffers and landscaping and setbacks. But I will tell you what, what we've learned, I think, over the past two or three years is that BRM's are a tool, but not the only tool. And so I think we need, we need BRM's sometimes and there's places where they make a lot of sense and there's places where they make no sense. And just realizing that and having them be an option on the menu when we're dealing with buffering and landscaping and screening, having BRM's be an option, but not be the only option along our main and thoroughfares is what I would recommend is what I think is going to come out of our comprehensive plan and zoning update process. And there is a memo dated April 24th that is in your packet that you're welcome to review.
And I think there'll be more discussion of this as we get into the comp plan, what it is you want to do with that and if you want to change that, we can certainly do that as part of that comp plan. So there's more discussion to be had, but Mark's memo kind of outlines it.
All right, moving on.
The developer assessment to infrastructure policy, this really relates to where we have two lanes, three lanes, four lanes in a lot of locations and we've been trying to figure out how we can make that work. The most recent example I think that we got in the CIP is Devil's Glen Road, for instance, between 53rd and Forest Grove. You've got some parts where it's been put in, parts where it's not. So we'll be, we'll be working with community development and public works. Brent and Brian have been talking about this, trying to figure out how we can make that happen more succinctly and, and move this forward. I don't know, Brian, if you have any update you want to share?
Yeah, so Brent and I met and we kind of discussed this. We were looking at whatever in any, all policies ordinances that we have and there really isn't a single policy that we feel is going to be, you know, to fit all situations because every development is different. Like Mr. Plain said, there may be two lanes, three lanes, four lanes. It all depends on the traffic that is it, you know, that the road is on, that where the development is adjacent to and also the, the traffic that the proposed development would actually contribute to that network. So there really isn't a single policy that we can just have out there and blanket everything. So this is something that we're just going to have to take a step back and, and really investigate and that's something that we plan on starting here pretty soon.
Number 11, the school strategy and relationship building. I've talked to both superintendents about the concept of us sitting down with both boards in some sort of, I don't want to say retreat, but maybe a forum where we get together and we can just have dialogue and share our master plans or our strategic updates and both are certainly willing to do that. We thought maybe we would tackle that kind of over the summer to happen sometime in the fall when they get back into school. So both are indicating their willingness to do it. So it's just a matter of us getting this on, on the calendar for, for that initial meeting.
Okay.
And then the SAFER grant for firefighters, that's the, I think the last one, or we have Duck Creek Plaza, but the, Steve can talk a little bit about what he's done with that and what our follow-up has been. So Steve?
Sure. Thank you. We applied for the SAFER grant electronically on March 16th of this year, just beating the deadline. We also have contacted our legislators at the national level and they've asked for FEMA to provide support in consideration of our application. Application goes through three processes. One is electronic scoring, which happened earlier this year. The next one is by peer groups evaluation with various fire service groups across the nation considering and reading and evaluating our scores. They do not during this process tell you whether or not your application continues through the process. At each level, some of the applications drop out. It's currently at the technical review or evaluation level, which is by the FEMA Grant Directorate Office and they evaluate the scores and the applications that have been submitted and rank those in the order that they think they should be and to take advantage of the funding that's available.
Steve, do you know how many applicants there were?
I don't.
I think there were several thousand.
Last year, there were 1,500 or so applicants and only 118 awards were issued or given. It was about 14.2%, two times the amount that was available was requested last year, so.
And part of the problem is it used to be an 80/20.
Right.
So the local jurisdiction had to put in money. Now it's, at least since COVID, it's 100% funded by the federal government. So everybody's in and nobody's got any skin in the game. I think if we went back to like an 80/20, that might help.
Right. We did allude to the change in Iowa code or Iowa law that changed the amount of money that the city would get, that we had anticipated to receive in coming fiscal years, that was reduced by the legislature, nearly 900,000, I think, is what we stated. So that may be somewhat helpful to us. We also evaluated applications that had been successful from other jurisdictions to see what points they referred to and to try and make our application as good as possible.
And we did consult with our congressional delegation staff.
Yes.
About that. And we did send the draft to FEMA folks that volunteered prior to the applications being submitted for changes that might be advantageous to us. So, and as you said, Senators Grassley and Ernst and Representative Miller Meeks all sent letters of support, which we have copies of if you wanted to see those, to FEMA. And our federal lobbyist, Ed Graber, is working this as well as best he can from his seat in DC.
Questions? All right. Duck Creek Plaza.
Duck Creek Plaza, the action plan was.
Figure something out.
Figure something out and Jeff's figured it out. Great work, Jeff.
Happy to be blind, your honor. It's, it's, it's moving forward. The Real Estate Investment Trust based out of Texas has entered into a lease agreement with Malibu Jacks. The family entertainment venue is currently being built out. They're going through a lot of the permitting process with Mark and his team and I believe they expect to be open and operable later this year.
And there is a tenant for Hobby Lobby?
There are a couple of suitors for the Hobby Lobby currently. It's contingent upon what happens out on the frontage.
Okay. And your honor, the rest of the report is the management agenda. I did not intend to go through the management agenda with you. I just thought I hit the top 10. You can read that yourself. There's a report for everything, everywhere. And if you have questions about anything, you can ask any staff member you'd like on any one of the updates. Everybody did a great job of updating just about everything that we put on the plate with Lyle's work and I think the staff's done a great job of, of outlining that. And we did send a copy of this to Lyle, so he was aware of what we were doing. Unless you have any specific questions tonight, we would not ask, we don't need to update you any further. I think you can, you can easily read it at your leisure.
Yeah, we got it, what, Friday with this, or something like that? So if you guys have questions on the management already, now's the time. If not, all right, saying no further questions, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We start adjourned, good work, people.